All right, it has been five minutes and the Commissioners' Court Workshop will continue. Ms. Payne?
Next up is going to be Risk Management. Someone have Leslie Contreras come up?
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Leslie Contreras, Risk Manager. Hopefully, I can make it through this without hacking my lungs up. If that happens, I'll just look towards Joseph to take over. All right, so the requests we're making today, sorry, let me put my glasses on because I can't see without them. The request we are making today center around two critical issues, and that's security and liability. As you know, our location is downtown, an area that remains active throughout the week, including the weekends. As you know, we have First Friday and a bunch of downtown events that are not county-related. There is a constant foot and vehicle traffic that happens around the parking garage. This naturally includes a mix of employees, county customers, and members of the public. The parking garage serves many purposes. It's used for daily, it's used daily by employees of CSCD, the courthouse, the administration building, and IT department. It's also accessed by jurors, county customers, and private citizens. Some of those private citizens have leased spaces in the garage in which the county takes payment and holds those lease agreements for. All parking garages, of course, come with some inherent risks. But what makes this situation unique is its location between a courthouse, probation office, and city government buildings. This area often sees protests, homeless individuals, transients, sorry, and unfortunately, at times, vagrants. Excuse me. These realities elevate our concern for both the safety of county staff and liability to the county. Currently, the current camera system that is in place is outdated. We believe it dates back to the original construction of the garage. While it does cover the vehicle entry and exit points, so the main entry where the gates are, it also covers elevators and some of the drivelanes. It is not fully covered by cameras. There are many blind spots to include where all the vehicles park, which low and behold, that's where the incidents happen. If somebody wants to rob somebody, they're not going to stand in the middle of a driveway. They're going to go and hide behind a parked vehicle. Excuse me. Additionally, the quantity of footage, the quality of footage is unreliable. Some cameras are blurry, others lose connection, and there is no notification if or when a camera goes down. Often, the only way to know if there's an issue is if, for somebody to, from the county, to physically walk over to the parking garage and to check. Risk management must manually review footage using a small monitor in a closet, an operating system that feels like an old television, sorry, telephone switchboard. You know, those ones back in the day where they were all answering in one room, switching back and forth to get to the right line? That's exactly how we access the system over at the parking garage, hoping to find the correct camera view that we're looking for. When the system fails, or when we need backup footage, we are forced to reach out to the transit district, hoping they'll retrieve the footage in a timely manner. This system is not only outdated, it's failing, and it will only continue to degrade over time. Today, we are presenting two possible solutions for this. The first solution, which is the more cost-effective solution, would be to retrofit the camera system to integrate the current system, to integrate with the county's current system. This would be done by using encoders. So basically, it would just, the encoders would convert the current cameras to be able to be able to be digitalized into our current hexagon system. The other option is to replace the system entirely with an updated and upgraded solution that provides full digital integration, full coverage of the garage, and remote access. It's important to note that either option would also benefit county courthouse, the sheriff's office, and risk management. The sheriff's office is the one who responds to the parking garage when there's an incident. Since it's now technically county property, that's who gets called if there's an emergency in the garage. I do know that Constable's Office for Precinct Two has also been called over there on occasion to take some calls.
Are these all wireless that you're talking about?
That would be a question for IT, but no. I believe they're all hardwired in. We actually would have to, for either option, we'd have to re-put in new conduit. And that's part of the problem of the expense.
The expense.
Wouldn't it be, wouldn't it be a lot less money if they were all wireless? I mean, everybody's going to wireless. I wonder why we don't go to wireless?
I think that would be a question for IT maybe, but...
Do we have somebody that can answer that? Thank you.
Morning, Judge Commissioners. I'm Brandon Tice, Senior Services Manager for IT. To answer your question, all of the, all of the cameras in the county currently are all wired cameras as well. For a commercial-type installation like this, there are not a lot of options for wireless cameras.
But there are some. Twenty-three, $2,300 a camera on your replacement, that seems kind of expensive. There's a $163,000 price tag for 70 cameras for the placement system.
Yes, sir. There's currently 70 cameras in the parking garage right now. The replacement would be replaced with less cameras, 52 cameras.
Okay, so the cost per camera goes even higher.
That's just nuts.
So the other option is simply the conversion? Is that what the two options are?
But that sounds like a Band-Aid, a temporary Band-Aid.
It is a temporary Band-Aid. I mean, eventually, the system would have to get replaced anyway. However, if we had to be more cost-effective, you know, obviously, we know that you have to be physically responsible for the taxpayer dollar, and we completely understand that.
Well, I'd like to see some wireless options. I mean, I have property in several counties, and I could pull up on my phone those cameras and look and see what's going on on my property. Also, motion-activated, when somebody comes onto my property, tell me that they're there. So I don't know why we don't have those kind of commercial options available, but I'd sure like to explore that.
I'll second that.
Morning, Judge Commissioners. Eric Caldwell, Chief Information Officer. I don't know that we've actually looked at wireless options. I will say, though, that the cameras that we are running right now that are hardwired, that hardwiring also provides power to those, to those devices. If you are running truly wireless cameras, that means they're getting their power from batteries or, you know, some source that has to be replaced periodically. So you'll be out there visiting these cameras, you know, routinely. In the, in the, in the parking garage itself, the concrete and the rebar, in all likelihood, is going to prevent wireless signal transfer. And then the data rates of wireless transfer from these cameras is not going to be at the same, same level as our wired cameras. If you are pulling up...
How quick could you get those data rates, the Commissioners? Or example?
I don't know. Data rates, data transfer rates for wireless cameras. We can work on getting that.
Perfect.
Yes, sir. What I was going to say, though, is that looking at wireless cameras on your cellphone, in many cases, what you are looking at is you are looking at a wireless feed from the video management system behind those cameras. The cameras themselves are not directly feeding that feed to your cellphone. It's coming from the video management system behind the scenes, so bear that in mind. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I don't know. That'd seem more expensive.
We have another example. Thank you.
You still have to have a license.
Sorry. Good morning. Matt Wolfe, Senior Network Administrator. One thing with wireless, we do not have wireless in the parking garage at all right now. So a lot of the costs that are associated with this, running conduit and the cabling and all of that, we still would have to do with wireless access points and the cabling to get to those and everything else. So like, it's, it's an expensive cost, but you're going to see, see a lot more costs to support something wirelessly as well.
You'd have to put a whole new network in the building?
We'll have to do that anyway, but we'll also have to put access points that we were not planning to do.
Why would you have to put conduit in if you're, if you're running wireless?
The wireless has to run off of a wire.
To circumvent the concrete and the rebar so the signal can get through the building, correct?
Yes. Well, I mean, the, the...
And power.
The access point has to be connected to the network somehow, and that's through a network cable. But it has to go through a conduit because it, it'll be running along the surface of the roof of the concrete and the building.
But we can get those data rates, data rates, and compare all three options so we have a better look at it? And we have time to do this, correct? I mean, a short window, but we can get it done.
Is there a comparison on the durability of the wireless versus the non-wireless in terms of, you know, how long, you know, the use, I mean, I don't, I'm not a techie person, but, you know, the wireless that you have in your house is not of the quality that you would need for a commercial facility like this?
I'm not a techie person either. I will say that Wi-Fi is not always as reliable as...
Oh, good point. I forgot they run a Wi-Fi.
As a wired networked device, obviously. If our network went down, yeah, then those devices would go down. But with Wi-Fi, if you get, like, for instance, we had court in here, and we had so many people, they flowed into the atrium. They were kicking people off the Wi-Fi because it was shutting the TV down in here. And so it all, Wi-Fi, if too many people are on it, it's not as reliable as, you know, a wired network as well.
Okay.
But I think the question is, have we looked at commercially wireless? I'm sure there's some commercial aspects of whether wireless works or not. And if we've never even looked at that option, then that's, you know, we really need to look at it because it could save us a substantial amount of money.
Maybe.
We can, we can definitely look, look into that.
It's worth a shot.
You're right.
Now, we have time. We need to do the due diligence and get the numbers to the court.
Okay.
And we would appreciate that very much.
And we'll, we'll go ahead and do that. Just to finish up, the courthouse security did me a favor and called 911 dispatch and asked how many calls that we're getting, you know, roughly, just for the garage. This does not include probation. Probation has their own numbers. But there's been 47 calls in the last year into that parking garage. Risk management alone has received about five requests already since April for footage in the garage, and we have not been able to obtain any because of the way the system is built. So for the safety of our employees and our citizens, we recommend full replacement. However, we understand where, you know, how money is. What we'll do is we'll, we'll try to gather that information that y'all are requesting and, and present it to budget so that they can get that to you. Are there any other questions?
Commissioners?
No, I just wanted to say, I think it's, it's wise to ask the questions, but at the same time, for security and dependability of whatever we decide we're going to defer, you know, I will want to hear IT's input on that.
Yeah.
So it's wise to ask the questions. I hope, I hope everyone understands that's...
Yeah.
Our job up here is to try to make sure that we're doing the best we can with the taxpayer dollar.
Absolutely.
Ultimately, we have a lot of people that are employed here that are experts in what they do, and we're going to, we're just going to push a little bit to make sure we're doing the right thing.
Yeah, and ultimately, you have a million other requests to hear about, too, so that all costs money.
I thought it was only 900,000.
Leslie, thank you. Any further questions? No. Thank you so much.
Regarding the request, once we get through this process, if it's a party of y'all, so we do not have them mount, I could still propose that project, knowing that we might have to dip into contingency once those processes come in, if y'all want to continue the project, okay? So there's ways that we could still move forward. Next up is going to be Information Technology and Eric Caldwell.
Morning again, Judge Commissioners.
Hey, Eric.
Good morning.
Eric Caldwell, Precinct One.
Not everybody can live in two, Eric. It's okay.
Thank goodness.
Okay. Our top priority capital project request for FY '29, or excuse me, FY '26 is the 911 CAD upgrade. This CAD system has been in service now, it was in service when I got here 21 years ago. I think it's probably 25, 30 years old. The City of Bryan actually owns the 911 system. It is actually running, let me rephrase that, they own the software, this CAD software. It is running in their data center, and in a sense, they run it on behalf of 911. The Brazos Valley Emergency Communications District 911 utilizes that software running in the City of Bryan's data center for their, for their dispatching activities. Recently, there's been a lot of discussion about trying to get local entities on one common CAD system. And once again, that effort has failed. So the City of Bryan, in my opinion rightly, believes that it's time to upgrade that CAD system. And this request is to help fund that and make that happen because we utilize that exact same, that exact same system.
Eric, are they participating for the same dollar amount?
They are actually covering 60% of it, and this request is to cover 40% of the, of the software. The current CAD system, the vendor is going to continue supporting that CAD system. But they have made it clear that they're not going to continue developing it. They're not going to continue adding any additional functionality. And so it is, in a sense, you can think of it as a dead end. Eventually, they are going to just tell us that they are going to stop supporting it altogether. And we don't want to, you know, we don't want to get caught with our guard down. All right. Moving on, our second highest priority request is for some log management software. It is a utility that will, cloud-based utility that is going to allow us to aggregate our logs from our computer systems so that we can analyze those log files more easily. It will also put us in compliance with FBI's SEGIS policy provisions that require that we be able to track and audit and retain these, these logs for security purposes. And so that request is for $29,500. And I brought some of my team with me this morning. I brought all the smart people. And so if y'all have anything that y'all want to add, raise your hand, and I'll look backward and call you forward. Any questions about that? And I didn't ask, were there any questions about the 911 CAD upgrade?
Commissioners?
None for me.
Our third highest priority was for OPKEY Automated Testing Solution. In Oracle, there are quarterly updates that Oracle Corporation pushes out. And then, of course, my administrators routinely do configuration changes and that sort of thing. And it's, it's vitally important that we test all of these changes, whether they originate with my staff or they originate from Oracle. It's very important that we test those changes before we apply them in our production system, just to make sure that it's not going to break anything. And this tool is, would allow my staff to, or it would, it would assist my staff in building test scripts that will test those changes. It'll also help identify areas of change with each quarterly update that's going to be released by Oracle. This tool will point out the areas of functionality that are going to be changed. And again, it will allow my staff to build these test scripts to test these changes before they're put into production. It is really meant to be a, to prevent breaking of the system when, when changes are applied. Kathy, would you like to add anything? No? Okay. Are there any, any questions?
Any questions, Commissioners?
Oh, that reminds me. I actually have, I had sent out a packet of material. I'd sent out a packet of material. This is an updated version of that material for this particular request. Okay, if there are no questions, then I'll move on. The fourth highest priority request that we submitted back in March was for parking garage gates to switch over. However, that project is no longer needed. I understand that Brazos Transit District has identified a new parking garage gate arm system that does not require ID badges. Instead, it's going to use license plate readers. And so consequently, we do not need to switch those gate arms over to our badge system. So I'm pulling that request. All right, the next two, if there's no questions, the next two projects that we submitted back in March, very, very similar. They are for AV upgrades for the Associate Misdemeanor Court and the Associate Family Court. Those systems were put in place back when the courthouse was being renovated. And I think it was, I think they were installed in early 2015. And so they are already 10 years old. Well, at least portions of them, because over the years, we've cannibalized different things and tried to Band-Aid and patch the, the systems. But they still have, they still have problems. Problems that we are made aware of and that we have to go fix. In some cases, they are problems that the staff in the courtrooms have already become familiar enough with that they know how to go in there and they restart systems. And it's just, it's very disrupting to try to hold court when these AV systems are failing. And so in the packet of material that I sent to you, I sent letters of support from both Judge Henselain and Judge Zachary.
So these proposals to replace or simply upgrade?
Brandon, do you want to answer that? We're not, we're not for collecting it and replacing it altogether. It's an upgrade, upgrade, correct? Right. Okay. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Why does it cost a quarter of a million dollars to upgrade? I don't understand, I don't understand these, I see these numbers, I'm just like, what's happened to the world? I mean, all we're doing is upgrading, and it's 230,000 and then also 233,000?
Yes, sir.
Why?
It's complicated equipment.
Technology.
Technology. Brandon, would you like to clarify further?
But, but I mean, that's a, again, like, Brandon, it's a great chance, you know, for just us. We're not, we're not the IT professionals. And I can stay at a residence and all day long, still won't be. But if we, we could understand the, maybe what the complexity is, and, and, you know, people are watching this, too. Like, help them understand what, what the complexity is and what drives that cost. Because we don't know. I mean, I have clients all the time that just don't know what stuff costs, and I have to explain it. So Fred's over here regretting that he was in the car business his whole career and not in the camera business. So give him a moment to get, get himself together.
Yeah, I need to be in the camera business.
Right.
So again, Brandon Tice, IT. So currently, it does not do teleconferencing very well in the, in the, in those two courtrooms as well. And so there is, so it's, it's, I would call it, even though we, we view it as kind of an upgrade, but I would call it as, as a replacement in it, as well as an upgrade, upgrade and replacement, if that makes sense. I don't know if that makes sense very much, but it, it just comes to a point where the court is being delayed or stopped during court to fix these AV, AV issues that are happening in the courtroom. So it slows the whole process down, and if there's multiple, you know, cases within those courtrooms, it just slows the whole day down as well. And, yeah, like Eric said, it's just the, the cost of the equipment and, and everything, everything else is the reason. And there's programming that's involved.
So you're talking about cameras, and you're talking about microphones, and...
Yes, sir.
I mean, just like basic stuff. I mean, that you could go down to Best Buy and buy, I mean...
No, sir. This, this is, the audio portion, for example, is using Creston. It is, I'm not sure I know how to say this, but it, it, it's using the microphones for... Everyone in the room who has to speak, there's got to be a microphone in their functioning. And then that sound is also then turned around and piped back into the courtroom. So for example, if you go in there for jury duty, you have to be able to hear the judge speaking at the, at the bench. You then have to be able to hear the defense attorney asking their questions during voir dire. You have to be able to hear the prosecutors asking their questions during voir dire. So there's different people speaking, granted, at different times. But when that sound is then piped back in, those microphones, you don't want those microphones picking that sound back up and then getting into a, a sound feedback loop. It's very much like this, this setup in here. We've got speakers back here so that the audience, both in this room as well as in the gallery, can hear what I'm saying and can hear what y'all are saying. But we don't want your microphones picking up my voice as I'm projecting it forward. We really want this microphone to be the one picking up that sound and then piping it back. Furthermore, we don't want this microphone picking up the sound that is being piped back into this room or into the, into the gallery behind us. So it's a fairly complex, fairly complex system. At the same time, if there, there are large TVs in there. So if the prosecutors want to play evidence in the courtroom so that everybody in the courtroom can hear this video, for example, it's got to be able to play onto those projection screens. There's a projection screen that the gallery audience can see. There's a projection screen that the, that the jury can see. There'll be a projection screen on the judge's... that the, that the jury can see, there'll be a projection screen on the judge's bench so he can, he or she can watch it. There'll be a projection screen or audio coming in for the court reporter to be able to, you know, capture the conversations that are happening. It, it's rather involved, it's not, it, it's more involved than you might, might realize.
And it needs to be recorded?
Just wanted to ask.
Transcribed for security, legality?
Yes, sir.
And all that has to work while someone's remote potentially participating?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I don't know. He says yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, that's what I'm picking up. It's a lot of things happening at one time, trying to be seamless, but it's very complicated.
And it needs to be clear.
Yeah.
And like Eric was alluding to, there's different zones. And this is not just audio, it's audio and video, like Eric was stating as well.
I just experienced that going through the DA's academy, where they, we did a mock court where you're right, all of these different TV screens and the hearing of, of evidence. And, you know, it's kind of like what she was saying about in the parking garage, if they needed to show a video of the actual crime and everybody had to see it, you could hear it, and man, it was extremely involved. And, and as you say, they, they recorded also so that they could.
Point out that there's a speaker right here, you know, within feet of this microphone, but as you're speaking, this microphone is not picking it up and feeding it back to us.
Right, right. And even our system needs some updating, believe me. Because sometimes, like, if you step away from that mic, I can't hear you as well.
We, we also have Trevor Lansdowne, our project manager, who was, I think, he was involved in the design of this 10 years ago. So if there's anything else that you would like to add in, I'd invite you to do so. Or you could do like Kathy, just tell me if they have questions.
Thank you, Trevor.
Morning, Judge, Commissioners?
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Oh, happy birthday.
Appreciate it. Eric pretty well nailed it. I mean, these are, they are complex systems. There's, every video device has an encoder, decoder sitting behind it. The existing equipment that's in those courtrooms, that stuff's of an age that, I mean, you guys know how, how quick technology advances. And so that stuff's harder to get, it's more expensive. This puts it on a platform equal to what we've done in the, or would put it equal to what we've gone in and done in the district courtrooms. So it's a very similar upgrade to, was FY '24, I believe, we did the 361st and 272nd upgrades.
We did, we did go out and bid this, right?
I believe the pricing that we get is on the, it's on state contract through tips, I believe.
What does that necessarily mean, it's the best price?
I, that's, I, I don't know.
I mean, it's a good question.
I can't answer. It's contract pricing, we could bid it. There's, I don't think there's any reason we can't. So, big chunk of that's labor too. I mean, it's, it's likely a week to, two weeks' worth of new cable pulls, new installs, everything else, so a big chunk of it's install and programming labor.
Can, yes, Ms. Payne?
One quick question. I know that we're building 101. Nina? Okay, I know we're building 101, and I know that we're going to have to renovate third and fourth floor of the courthouse. My question to IT is, can these courtrooms stay the way, way they are currently? Put bayonets on them until we can figure out what is going to be remodeled and upgraded? Because if not, you might be doing this another two years. And so I think there's some additional questions that we do need to figure out, and the IT does need to answer. Okay?
Absolutely. So Trevor, my next question would be of the other courtrooms in the courthouse. How are we technology and AV-wise? Is that whole building up for a redo?
That's probably a better question for IT, as far as kind of their, their service tickets and everything that they've taken on the system. The different courts use it differently. You, you think everybody kind of does the same thing, but the magistrate court's a little different than the county court, different than the district court. There's kind of more pieces to some of the courtrooms too. And so I think the utilization of it probably factors into the, the requirement for the upgrade, and so that's probably something to dive into maybe a little bit more. But like Nina said, I think there's, I think there's more work coming in the courthouse that likely will involve at least some of this, so.
Brandon, do you think we can Band-Aid that to, till we can establish what our final court shuffle might look like?
We have been Band-Aiding it for the last probably three or four years or five years or so, but.
I was afraid that was the answer.
But I, that is, I believe that is a fair, that is a fair ask of, of yourself to continue to Band-Aid it a little bit until we can get a better, like Nina asked that question, on whether these courtrooms are moving over to 101 or not. I don't, I don't know, that might be a better question for.
Yeah.
Trevor, but.
Well, we'll tell Judge Zachary and Henslerling that was Nina's idea.
Okay.
And not mine.
So I can tell you from visiting with the judges over there, they're very complimentary of the support y'all give them.
Yes.
The level of technology that we offer participants to our courtrooms rivals anything around us, and they're very complimentary that when there's an issue, you guys respond. So I appreciate that on behalf of the residents of Brazos County. Thank you all for what y'all do.
You're very welcome. And thank you from me as leader of that team, thank you for that. We've, we've heard that as well recently from one of the court reporters as well around the state, different counties, that, like you said, we, we're at the top of the, of the game for those.
Well, if you can keep doing that with a fresh supply of Band-Aids, maybe in a couple of years, we can kill two birds with one stone.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Just make a note that Mr. Mider doesn't, they do not do jury trials, which is Zachary's, but Henslerling, she has a court reporter, so if something fails, at least we're able to maneuver for the time being, okay?
Thank you, Eric.
Sure.
Any other questions? Commissioners?
No. Good to proceed.
Proceed. All right, radio replacement. This is something that we have had on the radar now for several years. We had started, I think, back in, uh, three or four years ago? In any case, we started forecasting since FY '23 that we were going to need to do this. The radios that our law enforcement and our investigators and even people over in CSCD carry, those radios are as much as 10 years old, 12 years old? Yes, some of them are as much as 12 years old, and the service, normal serviceable life for these things is seven to 10 years old. And so we've already driven many, many of these radios out beyond their normal useful life, and it is time to, time to start replacing them. So what we did is we put together a price tag of $2.6 million to replace all of the handheld radios for, in FY '26, and then another $1,400,000 to replace the in-car radios in FY '30. Recognizing that that would, might be a bitter pill to swallow, we turned in a, an alternative approach, which would allow us to spread the cost out of the handhelds over two consecutive fiscal years. We would be replacing 170 of those handheld radios in FY '26 at a cost of $1,009,000. And then we would replace another 75 radios in FY '27 at a cost of $753,000. You may be asking yourself, why 170 and then 75? Why not, you know, balance that out? It's because the 170 are for the law enforcement, and the remaining 75 are for non-law enforcement. It's actually two different varieties of radio. The 75 that we could push out a year do not have the same functionality as the law enforcement radios. We, we don't really want to break up the 170 law enforcement or even the 75 non-law enforcement and spread those things out over several years, because as Motorola is manufacturing these things, they manufacture them with, with certain function sets. And if we buy them, if we don't buy them all together, that means that we are likely going to get two different varieties of that radio with, with two different code plugs and management of those radios becomes a real nightmare. We can, we can certainly carve out the other 75 and push those things out a year, because, again, they're going to be different radios anyway, so that doesn't, that really won't impact us. In, in any case, we would like to see one of these two alternative approaches funded, because it's time to replace those radios. Okay?
Any questions, Commissioners?
And to be clear, you said the law enforcement would probably be the first one?
Priority one.
Priority one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks, Eric.
Any problem if you replace law enforcement, them talking to the non-law enforcement?
No, that.
Okay, that might be a problem.
No, sir.
The non-law enforcement, the EMs for each city, do they have a radio? In particular, I was asked by the EM for Wixson Valley, he was saying that he and Curtin do not, so they would like to.
I, I see our emergency management coordinator back here shaking his head, no.
Jason, come on up. Thank you for being here.
It's a little smaller crowd than the last time Jason was presenting. People probably didn't know that he was going to be presenting, is why.
I'm on the agenda for later this afternoon, so they'll probably show up.
They'll be back, okay, good, sir. We'll get the chairs up.
So currently, emergency management coordinator for Wixson Valley and the City of Curtin do not have handheld radios that are issued by Brazos County currently.
Okay.
They do not. But we do have a cache of radios in emergency management.
It's been requested to me that they could.
Correct.
Could we, is it possible out of that cache that we could give those two EMs radios?
We, we can absolutely have that discussion with Judge and.
Sorry, yeah, I don't mean to drill into the weeds, but yeah.
No, no problem at all, we can have that discussion, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Eric? I would, I'd also add that we have taken old radios before that had, that we had used until it was the end of their life, and we took them and we sold them to, I want to say it was Grimes County for a dollar, a dollar a unit. They were able to continue using those things, and because of, because of that, that deal that we gave them, they were actually able to come on to our BBWAX, Brazos Valley Wide Area Communication System. And consequently, our cost, everybody's cost per radio went down because of the economy of scale by adding in Grimes County and those additional radios. And so we may, we may be able to do something similar. Although I will say that we, we've recently added in Robertson County, and so I'm not, I don't think Madison County is part of our radio system. But in any case, there may be an opportunity to take these radios and, and get them to a, another county somewhere, help, help them out. All right. And then our final ask is for a physical access control upgrade. All your ID badges that get you through all of these doors, they are, some of them are 19, 20 years old. Most of them are many, many years old, but in any case, they are subject to a security flaw that our risk management coordinator actually identified and was able to, to verify. He was able to buy a small device off of Amazon. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think I remember the story, is that he went and bought a small device off of Amazon and then was able to quickly spoof a card and go around and open, open doors when he shouldn't have. And so the purpose behind this upgrade is to bring in the technology that is not subject to that spoofing. Does anybody here want to add anything to that? Brandon? No? Am I sure questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
Ms. Payne?
Currently, if I lost my ID badge and someone picks it up, is there a way to cancel the ID badge that no longer works?
No.
Yes, ma'am. There is. We, we just cancel it within the system, within the velocity system.
Okay.
But if someone picks it up and.
I mean, if I report it stolen or it's lost, will it be able to be discontinued?
That's correct.
Okay.
Leslie, you look like you have something to say.
Well, she has her badge.
Yeah.
I do. That is with the caveat that it's reported that it was lost or stolen. That doesn't always happen.
Thank you for that.
You got to know it's missing.
I want to come to work.
I know, exactly.
I will say that this was our 15th priority. It was lower on our list. We started the practice several years ago of prioritizing these things and giving them a, a number, recognizing that money is not infinite. And so it was always our hope that you would evaluate these in our ranked order first and fund them until you run out of money. So, anyway, it was lower on our list. Any other questions?
Commissioners?
No.
Not at this time. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Eric.
Ms. Payne?
With that being said, all the money has been used up until IT receives, so we're done for the day. I'm just kidding, no. We're going to have. You go home. No, before we take another break, we're going to go ahead and have project management is next, if that's okay, and then we'll take a little five-minute break and then we'll come back. So project management, Trevor Lansdowne?
Morning, Judge, Commissioners, again.
Morning, Trevor. Happy birthday once again.
Oh, thank you.
Is it today?
It was last week, I was out on vacation, but it was 40, so. Yeah, big 4-0. So I've, I've, there's two requests in from my department, but I'm going to start with the big one, and that is a master plan for Brazos County. So what you have in your hands and are kind of passing around is the last master plan that the county had done, which was 2004 and 2005. Yeah, so 20 years since we've had a master plan. And, you know, I think, what is a master plan? I think that's probably a question that a lot of people ask, but it is a, is it an endeavor and it is a process that we would go through as a municipality to set a mission and strategic goals at the executive level for our departments and our department heads to be able to try and meet. We don't, we don't really have that today, right now. Everybody's doing their best, I think, to kind of get by and do what they, get the churn out that they think needs to keep the county running. But I, I think that there are, if the court and the judge had, had some kind of really high-level strategic goals that the department heads and the county were striving to meet, I think that could clear up, I think, both of this, this process that we go through so that we can kind of weight projects against what those strategic goals are, and then we can kind of land in priorities and where they land, and it's not all kind of on Nina just to decide what needs to happen and doesn't need to happen. And I think there's more that we can do with that, it's very open-ended, and we can take that as far as the court would like to. I think this would be a, it'd be a new endeavor, and it'd be different, for sure, but I think it would set us up good for the future. I think you see a very diverse mix of projects that are being requested through this process. And we have a lot of projects going on currently. And when you look at all of these in a vacuum, it's easy to kind of talk about them and, and kind of just the, the minute details of that individual project, but there are downstream effects to everything that we do, and having the master plan in place to look at a bigger picture at a 10,000-foot view.
So having a strategic plan, working efficiently and watching our finances, we could get So having a strategic plan, working efficiently and watching our finances, we could get there quicker, faster and cheaper.
Yes, sir. You know, it limits the amount of rework we do. Alliance, again, alignment down the org chart through the county, I think is a big one. I hear it from department heads all the time when we go around and work projects is, you know, what, what does the court want? What are we trying to do? And this would help us establish that, so. There's some backup data to this as well and it gets pretty in the weeds. But I think developing the scope, if the court decides to move forward, I think over the next couple of months as we get towards the next fiscal, is, would be a group effort and coming up with exactly what you guys would like to see.
I think it's wise, especially when we're going to avoid reworking or double duty or doing something, undoing it to do something else. I mean, yeah, I think that's a great plan. And also when you have new commissioners coming in, if they have a feel for, you know, it's not like you're regulating future courts, but if you have an idea, they can understand. They, they may, may want to rework that themselves, but they could understand what the county priorities were and why and what they were moving toward.
Absolutely. And, and I, I see this long-term as being a living document. I think it's something that needs to kind of be refreshed every once in a while.
Often.
Often, yes, sir. You, you look through there and what you don't see in that document that really worked itself out through the years is how technology kind of came along and manipulated kind of the future space and, and department growth numbers that are in there. Some of it did bear out and, and, but some of it didn't because we had efficiencies with technology and things that came along. But that did trigger a lot of projects at the time. We built the sheriff's office, we expanded the jail, we remodeled the courthouse, we, we bought and remodeled this building. We built the tax office. There were a lot of projects that came out of that, that last master plan that we did. I think Katie's the only one with her name that's still on it. And so everyone else has, has gone, new court, new, a lot of new folks, so. That's my ask on that one.
I agree with the judge. We need to be strategic because, you know, again, as you say, as we get a new court, myself included, when I came onboard, looking at it strategically, how do we operate the county in the most efficient way that we try to do the best that we can with our taxpayer dollars in a way that also gets us ready for the future? Because, you know, we're going to grow. We are, from rural to resident, I mean, urban status changed with the 2020 election. That's only going to, that, that designation requires that we look at the future like a city-ish, I will say. We, we're no longer considered a rural county and we need to be thinking that way in terms of preparation for the growth of this county and try as best we can to keep up with that potential. Because I think we, you know, we, we, we've been kind of surprised with the changes of things that we need to do and the age of some of the things. You know, listening to the different departments talk about the age of the equipment, the age of the software. I know that when I have to go from Microsoft 10 now to Microsoft 11, you know. So, so the, appreciate you helping us with that vision.
Absolutely.
As we think about what we can and cannot do. And, and spending the county's money as efficiently and safely as we can.
Agreed. You have questions on the master plan?
Commissioners, any further questions?
No questions.
You said that was your first big ask.
Yeah, the, the second ask is not near as large. But our, our department has no vehicles currently, no county vehicles. And so I have a request in for two for our department, just to do the county's business. We're, we run around in our personal vehicles now, but again, we were a new department last October and kind of playing catch up on some things, but this being one of them, so.
I bet Ken has some badly worn out.
I'll take a steel, steel steering wheel.
Just keep a pair of pliers and a coat hanger in your, in your trunk.
Yeah, there you go.
Have you ever operated a boom before?
I have, I have.
I don't think it's road, street ready.
As he's driving from place to place, he could knock out a ditch or two.
That's right.
Any further questions?
Thanks, Trevor.
Absolutely.
Trevor, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Payne, is it break time?
Yes. Five minutes, 10 minutes?
Five minute break. This is attention to the court, take a five minute break.
And the next up would be facility services after that.
Work shop, thank you.